The December 4th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City Council provides an opportunity for residents to address the council prior to the start of each city council meeting between 6:30 and 6:55. If you wish to be a scheduled speaker at that time and be guaranteed of an opportunity to speak, please contact the City Manager's Office by noon of the date of the meeting, (949) 8412, and give us your name and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time allows, we also open up the floor to impromptu speakers. These portions of the meeting are not televised nor recorded. If you have any other questions, contact the City Manager's Office, again, (949) 8412. First thing we have on the agenda tonight is a report from our newly re-elected Hennepin County Commissioner, Jan Callison. If you'd like to come up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I brought along a PowerPoint, so I'm going to try and operate this. We'll see how well I do, but I wanted to just give you some background on the budget, as you usually do. Maybe mention the Southwest LRT project and then a few other items. So, please interrupt me if you have questions, and I'm happy to respond to other issues at the end as well. That's it. So, it's budget time for us, just as it is for you. I thought I'd give you some sense for the county revenues, as well as the needs, and this probably will not be particularly new information to you, but this first slide gives you a sense for the revenues over the past three years. You can see that in blue is the 2010, the red is 2011 budget, and the yellow is 2012. And so, our property taxes have been relatively flat over the past three years. Federal aid or assistance has been flat as well. State has declined slightly. Fees and services up, other sources of revenue down. And the picture is probably what you know from the local scene in Eden Prairie, which is essentially that revenues coming into local units of government are largely flat, perhaps declining. And if you look into 2013 and look at the state budget deficit, look at the federal issues, it's hard to predict that there's going to be a lot of new revenue. And so, that's certainly the picture at Hennepin County, that we aren't anticipating large new sources of revenue. We do have increased needs, though, and I brought you some information that was given to me back in June, so it's a little dated, but it gives you a sense for the sort of programs that we offer in Hennepin County and the needs that we're facing. This first slide shows the number of families who are staying in our shelters per night, and the headline is that in 2012, they are nearing the 2001 levels. That's significant because we've made a concerted effort over the past several years to reduce the number of families, in particular in shelter, to get them out of shelter, get them into housing, get children in different placement. And we've been successful for a fairly long time, but we are less successful today than we used to be. October is typically our highest usage month, and this year, we peaked before October. We ended up converting some administrative space into shelter space, and we still didn't have enough room for people in our shelters, and we had to look elsewhere for shelter beds for people. So, we have been struggling to make sure that people in Hennepin County and children in particularly are adequately housed. These next two slides show two of the programs that we operate on behalf of the state. The first is the monthly average of open individuals on medical programs. You can see a 26% increase over four years in Hennepin County. Monthly average food, open food support and amphyt food portion cases, you know that as food stamps, a 69% increase in four years.
Jan, what is the definition of "open" in these terms?
Means "active."
Active, okay. Case files are open?
Correct.
Okay.
The next two slides. Monthly average calls to child protection, a 28% increase over four years. Monthly average calls to adult protection, 13% increase over four years. And then, long-term care consultations. We're required by the state of Minnesota to provide consultations for seniors. If you had a parent who was aging and you were looking for alternatives, you call the county, and we provide an assessment. And we're required to do that. We've seen the numbers increase dramatically, 26% increase over four years. I think we have a backlog of something like 600 cases, and so, that's been an area that we are struggling with, and you'll see that as you look at our budget for 2013, we're putting more resources into that area. But it's a service the county is required to provide for anybody. And it now, with some changes in law, we'll have to provide it annually to people as well. So, each year, if you're receiving, if you're of the appropriate age, we'd have to consult with you to make sure you're still getting the right services. And then, the final chart is social worker staffing level of 14% decrease over four years. And the budget at Hennepin County has been largely flat for the past several years. What we're looking at for 2013, actually, I should say that the tax levy has been flat. The budget tends to fluctuate depending upon programs that we either offer or find other ways to fund. But for next year, we're looking at about a 1.2% increase in the county's budget, and the administrator is proposing a 0.9% increase in the tax levy, so a nine-tenth of 1% increase in the tax levy. When you add the railroad authority and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, it's a 1.5% levy increase. So, fairly modest, recognizing the needs that we have in Hennepin County. We're at the end of our budget cycle. We had our truth in taxation hearing last week, and we will set our budget on December 11th. I would expect we'll stay about that level. In fact, our max levy was 1%, so the 0.9% is a little bit lower than our maximum levy, but it's not going to make a big difference on anybody's property tax bill. So, that's essentially our budget. The increases that we are looking at reflect the fact that we're now proposing a cost-of-living adjustment for employees. They haven't had one in four years, as well as some increased staffing to deal with some of these social service needs. Then, I thought you might be interested in the library in Eden Prairie, and so, I brought along some statistics on library usage. You have a well-used library in Eden Prairie. You'll see that total checkouts in 2011, a million point three, relatively stable. Library visits, 361,000 that year, and Internet computer sessions, 141,000, reference questions, 42,000. So, what we're seeing in our libraries is usage continues to be heavy. People certainly are checking books out electronically. That usage has grown, but people are still showing up at our buildings and still checking out books the old-fashioned way. I wanted to comment on Southwest LRT. You hosted our third hearing here last week. It was well-attended. The room was packed. I think in the three hearings that we've had, we had about 100 people testify, so we were pleased with the turnout that we had. As we talk about Southwest LRT, I thought you might be interested in the next steps of where we go from here. Right now, Hennepin County is the responsible government unit, or the RGU. That will change to the Metropolitan Council the end of this month, is my expectation. So, they will be the party in front of all of this, but Hennepin County will still be involved. We will be powering up, if you will, for preliminary engineering. We've been in that phase for a year, but haven't accomplished a whole lot, frankly, as we've waited for the draft environmental impact statement to come out. So, we'll be pushing the preliminary engineering this next year. We would anticipate, this is very preliminary, that municipal consent might come as early as the fall of 2013 or 2014 in the winter. So, that's in the next year, year and a half, something like that. Final engineering is likely to take a year, and we would still hope to have construction starting in 2015 or 2016 with a 2018 opening. So, lots of work to be done between now and then, but I do want to thank you for the mayor's involvement, for the staff's involvement, for the work that you're doing in your community around this line, which is a really important initiative for Hennepin County. Then, the final thing I would point out is that our county administrator is retiring. Richard Johnson has been in that position, I think, for seven years. December 14th is his last day, so about two weeks. He has been, I think, a remarkable leader during these times of reduced resources and increased needs, so we are in the process of looking for his replacement. Clearly, we won't have anybody in place as the new county administrator until sometime in the winter. We'll be going through a process of recruitment, and I'm sure we'll have good candidates, and there's always an opportunity when somebody leaves, but certainly, Richard will be missed, so I wanted to let you know about that as well. And that's all I had prepared. I do have a slide with information about how you can contact me if anybody... Maybe I don't have that slide.
No, it's on.
Is it on? Okay, it's not showing up there. Now, I've probably moved it off.
Yeah, I think it does.
So, there's information on the website for my contact information. My phone number is (612) 348-7886. I'm happy to take phone calls or emails or whatever might be appropriate for somebody to reach me with questions or comments. But thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Callison, for coming out tonight.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to add a couple of things, both Councilmember Kathy Nelson and Councilmember Ahlo have also been involved on LRT.
I should have mentioned that.
That's okay. But I just wanted to point it out, and then also, the DEIS comment period has been pushed out to the end of the month, I believe.
That is correct. December 31st.
Yep. So, there's still an opportunity for people to get their comments in on that.
Right. Thank you for mentioning that as well.
Yep. Okay. Thank you again for coming.
You're welcome.
Bye. Is there a motion to approve the agenda and other items of business?
So moved. Second.
Anything to add?
Just one real quick thank you during Councilmember reports.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the special council meeting held Tuesday, November 13th? That was the canvassing meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And abstained, I was not at that meeting.
No, I abstained as well. I was not at that meeting.
Is that okay, for two? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the council workshop held on Tuesday, November 20th?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion for approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on the same date.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Never mind. Okay. Consent calendars, or motion for approval of those items?
Move approval. Second.
Anything to pull for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us to our first public hearing, which is the approval for the 2013 budget, which is typically presented at this time, although we've been working on it for a long, long, long time. Mr. Gettle.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For us, a long time is more than a year. We do a two-year budgeting process, so we started thinking about this upcoming budget two years ago. So, I do want to state that there are two things occurring tonight. One is a public hearing or a public meeting on our proposed budget and levy. All of our taxpayers were notified of this meeting when they received their value statements within the last month. So, we would like to provide you with a presentation of our upcoming budget and open a public hearing. Then, later on, following all of the other public hearings we have tonight, I shouldn't say all the other, less than what we had two weeks ago, but following the other public hearings, then, under our reports of the city manager is when we would ask at that time that you would take action on next year's budget. And you'll see as well, we have a presentation and action at that time on our 10-year capital improvement plan. So, Finance Manager Sue Kachiver, with a little bit of an assist at the end from myself, would like to provide you with a presentation and overview of our budget, and then open up the public meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gettle. Mayor, Councilmembers, and members of the audience, I'm pleased to present on the 2013 budget. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to solicit input on the city's proposed budget and tax levy. It's a requirement of state law, and it's held, as Mr. Gettle mentioned, after everybody's received their 2013 property tax statements. Other entities also had meetings. So, Hennepin County had a meeting, November 27th. The Eden Prairie schools will be December 11th, Metropolitan Council December 12th. And the state of Minnesota, who also levies taxes, they're actually not required to have a public meeting. This gives you a history of the city's market value, of our tax base, and as you can see, since 2009, that has been declining, and in this past year, it decreased about 1.8%. The good news is that we see that beginning to moderate next year, and seeing it as either being flat or actually increasing slightly, so we're hoping that will now start to go forward in a good direction. So, this is a budget summary for 2013, and you can see the change in the general fund is about 944,000, or a 2.5% increase. And that increase really is, for the most part, just to maintain city services at their current level. And the debt service payments are increasing, 375,000. The capital improvement plan levy is remaining flat, so there's a total increase of about 1.3 million, or 3.2% total. So, this is a summary of the general fund revenues, which is the main operating fund of the city, where you see your general city services and police and fire and services paid out of. So, property taxes are increasing 0.9%. Licenses and permits are increasing 200,000, or 7.5%. We felt comfortable increasing development revenue by about 200,000. We've been very conservative in projecting those revenues, but looking at past history, we felt comfortable increasing those. Intergovernmental revenue is remaining flat. It's mostly made up of police and fire pension, state aid, and that's been a little bit volatile and basically flat for many, many years. Charges for services is increasing a bit for park and recreation, charges for services primarily, other revenues remaining flat, and transfers in is going up as we're using actually last year's positive general fund results to pay for some one-time items in the general fund next year. So, just to kind of give you a pie chart of where all the revenue comes from in the general fund, as you can see, 75% is from property taxes, and that's very stable from year to year. Licenses and permits is 7%, intergovernmental revenue 2%, charges for services 11%, transfers in 3%, and other revenue 2%. So, this gives you just a summary of the general fund expenditures by each one of the departments. As you can see, the bottom line, again, is increasing 2.5%, so overall, maintaining city services. Fire is going up a bit more for the duty crew, the second year implementation of that, and community development a bit more for the addition of an administrative tech position. And again, this just shows the makeup of the general fund budget, so about 32% of expenditures are for police, 13 for fire, 25% for parks and recreation, 6% community development, 14% public works, and 10% towards administrative areas. And this shows a summary of the city's debt payments that we'll be making next year, and you can see that's increasing about 375,000 to 3.4 million dollars. Most areas are staying flat. In 2012, we did pay off the 2003 A Park Bond, so those were defeased, and then also, there's an increase for the 2009 equipment certificates. And this is just a projection of the future debt levies based on our current debt outstanding, so you can see in the coming years, if we don't add any new additional debt, that our debt expenditures would go down substantially. This is a summary then of the proposed property tax change. So, the general fund is going up 290,000, or about 1%. Capital improvements is flat. Debt service is basically flat. The first debt service is debt service on tax capacity, and the second debt service is debt service and market value. So, one's going up 115 and one's going down 115, so it's netting to zero, less the fiscal disparities contribution for a net property tax increase of 0.9%. This is a summary of the city tax impact on the median value home of 312,600 dollars. That home actually saw a 4.4% decrease in value from last year. So, last year, that home would have paid 1,105 dollars, and this year, it's 1,087 dollars, so that's actually a decrease of 18 dollars, or 1.6%. For an apartment valued at 5 million dollars, you can see the change is 2,310, or 11.6% change. With apartments, the values increased quite a bit, and that's driving quite a bit of that change. The value increased 7.8%. And then, for a commercial property, the change is 559 dollars, or 6.9%. It should be noted, though, that for commercial property, every year, the amount that they distribute into the fiscal disparities pool can either increase or decrease, which changes the tax base of the city taxes on. So, if you take that into account, this year, the increase would actually be 4.6% or 371 dollars. And this shows the total tax impact for that median value home, which includes all taxing districts, so that would include Hennepin County, Eden Prairie schools, and other miscellaneous taxing districts. So, residential property is going from 4,450 dollars to 4,371, or a decrease of 79 dollars, or 1.8%. Apartments are going up to 8,853 dollars, or 11.3%, and then, commercial overall is going up 5.7%. And this shows the property tax distribution for the median value home. So, for the median value home, about 25% of your taxes is coming to the city to pay for city services, 33% is going to the school district, 35% is going to Hennepin County, and 7% is going to other taxing districts. And this shows the residential property changes from 2012, so about 80% of homeowners in Eden Prairie are going to see a property tax decrease. About 19.5% are going to see a tax increase of under 4.9%. And then, there's very small percentages that are going to see higher than that. And this shows the distribution on a $2 million business of commercial property, where the tax dollars go. And you can see 27% goes to the state general tax, 14% to the school district, 29% to fiscal disparities, 16% to Hennepin County, 11% to Eden Prairie, and then, 3% to other taxing And this shows the monthly cost of city services for the median value home. It's 90 dollars and 57 cents, and last year, that number was 9208. So, that's a decrease of 1.6%. And then, just breaking it out into the various service areas, you can see police is the highest there at 2686 a month, and then, community development's the lowest amount, with 4 dollars and 64 cents a month. And for the general fund services, it's 8333 a month. And this graph shows, one of the goals of the budget is to be in the lower half of taxes on a $300,000 home for comparable cities. So, we consider comparable cities. We compare ourselves to other cities that belong to the municipal legislative commission, and that's a group of cities that have similar characteristics as ours, similar sort of market values, and they also don't, they're net contributors to the fiscal disparity pool. So, anyway, you can see that we're number four on there compared to the other cities, and that's where we were last year. I'll turn it over to Rick now.
Thanks, Sue. I thought Sue did a good job of kind of working through the numbers and the detail, and I just want to spend a couple of minutes maybe going up to 10,000 or 20,000 feet to kind of sum it up and to talk about what we've been trying to do as a city to maintain high service levels at what we think is a very affordable cost. A quick story I do want to tell is previously, we used to list the cities on there. City one and two had names, but there were a couple people that, from those other cities, that apparently had watched our meetings and took notes, so we felt maybe it wasn't fair to call out other cities that might have a higher tax rate. So, trust us that those cities do exist nearby, and they are very similar to our city. And quite frankly, if you took in the entire metro area and 108 cities in the metro area, we're going to also be very low when you look at all cities. But in this case, as Sue said, these 12 cities are very similar in nature to ours. Some of what you heard from Sue, I think it's important to emphasize again before I talk about what we've been trying to do to be efficient and innovative, and that is, we have seen an increase in our revenues. We're seeing that in 2012, and we adjusted our budget in 2013, but we still did so conservatively. We're also seeing where we're trying to keep our expenditures below the rate of inflation. And when we put together our two-year budget last year, we were proposing a budget that was in the 3% to 4% range, but we were able to find some savings in the last year, which I'm going to talk about, which brought that budget down to that 2.5% number, and a levy once again that's under 1%. The difference between this year and last year, when I talk about the values, is that that levy at 0.9% now shows a decrease in 18 dollars to the single-family median-valued home, and over 70 dollars in total tax. That was a slight increase last year, so now, that is a decrease, and I think that's related to our values that we have. So, that same levy produces that situation. You also saw that even though we have that slight uptick in debt for one year, it vastly does decrease following that. And Council may remember from a lot of discussions on the budget and the capital improvement plan, and the fact that we have vastly reduced any deficit we've had, that's also not in addition to that debt capacity that we have. So, you may recall conversations as a council where there is periods of time where we had budgets that we were putting together with a 1.5 million dollar deficit, and that deficit is now reduced in the 300,000 dollar range, and it's going lower. So, councils have commented, you commented last year, we need to wean ourself off of any reserves or any budget stabilization, and we're doing that. And in addition, as Sue mentioned earlier, any one-time revenues that we receive, we're putting toward one-time expenditures, because we don't want to operate on an ongoing basis assuming you're going to have one huge development project always happening. So, we're planning out five to 10 years in advance. And we've mentioned, too, ways in which we can deliver our service even better than what we're doing now, and not having to increase the cost, and in some cases, finding some savings. And what you're going to see is, a lot of it's technology, quite frankly. We think that we're a leader in delivering city services with innovation and more tools for technology, and you've heard a lot about that. For instance, having iPads and fire apparatus vehicles that allow you to pull up plans and information that I don't know any city has a similar plan like that. The same thing with the police department, and the ability to obtain real-time services 24 hours a day, be it through our city website. Also, as we look ahead, we're really excited about upcoming efficiencies and innovations, and quite frankly, if it weren't for several of the items on this list, I don't think we could have a budget and a levy less than 1%. We have the ability to allow people to schedule their inspections and see their flow of permit applications in real-time online. That helps the customer, and that helps the city. We've doubled, in the current year, for instance, our development revenue, and quite frankly, that's, when you see the projects happening with the residential development, with UHG, with Emerson, with a lot of our commercial development, that's a lot more work for our inspectors, our planning, and our engineering staff, but we're not proposing to add to that staff. We're looking at ways to spread those dollars out over a period of time, so we don't hit any issues with our budget later on, but also look for ways to streamline the process so the same amount of people can do even more work and allow the customer to even have a better experience as well. If you happened to see Channel 11 last week, we were featured on the news for our new snow management system. We've invested not a lot of money in what we think can be a pretty good return on a quicker, more targeted response to snow removal in our community, tracking all the indicators as it relates to snow and being able to respond, and also tracking all the product that we use, be it the sodium chloride we put down ahead of time, or the salt that we use. We're closely tracking that and watching that, because every little bit saves money. I mentioned as well, the employee benefits and wellness program. I think I talked about it earlier. I think I talked at an earlier presentation about our wellness program and the concept that I think in the last year or two years, our collective city staff lost 450 pounds as a group of people, and we feel that that leads to lower health insurance premiums. But also, we have made some design changes in our plan, in our single plan, where employees are paying in a little bit more, and we're offering different plans and moving toward HR HSAs where people take more of a stake in a role in their healthcare, and that's going to save the employee money, and it is saving the city money right now. And the last thing to mention is our embarking on a performance measurement program. We like to talk about thinking that we are an excellent city. We offer a high level of services, but how do you know? You don't know unless you track and measure, so we're embarking on that. In fact, there's going to be a workshop or presentation next month devoted to some of our new work plans that we have in our departments as well. So thinking about the 36 square miles of our city of almost 65,000 residents and 2,500 businesses, there's a lot of activity going on and quite a bit happening, and the concept that we could deliver that high level of service and keep improving it at what we think is a very affordable cost. I just heard tonight that apparently it's going to be $2 less per month this year than last year. And as Sue mentioned as well, we do have three main goals to our budget. Operationally, we are enhancing our public safety with our duty crew, and we're already seeing in the first few months of implementation increased response times with our duty crew. And we're also, as I mentioned with service efficiencies that I mentioned, and looking at our community surveys and our internal employee surveys, we're trying to maintain high levels of employee engagement and morale. So finally, as was mentioned already, we do compare very favorably with other cities. Whether people want to look at it or not, and we want to deliver the best service, we think we do very competitively, and we think while the ranking might be number three nationally and not number one, it could be argued that we're still maintaining a very positive image in the state and in the nation. So with that, Mayor, I turn it back to you to welcome any public comment. And again, when we get to the reports, staff is ready to answer any questions you may have on our budget.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for staff on this? Thank you. It was a great presentation. We heard it reviewed at many meetings, so thank you. And I like that synopsis of all the things we're doing to be more efficient and to be innovative and to provide better and better city services at a reduced cost. So thank you so much. This is a public, it's not a public hearing, it's a public meeting, but we will take comment. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the budget? Okay, so a motion to close the public meeting.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. See, our second item here is a resolution approving amendment of the tax increment financing plan and project management agreement. Mr. Rosso. I'm sorry, I said Mr. Rosso, Mr. Getcho.
I'm all right with that. She's ready, go ahead.
It's tough having two recs.
Ready. He's ready.
At this time, before you get to that, I'd really prefer the HRA meeting to be opened, because it'll be a public hearing, and the HRA resolution references having, based upon the public hearing, it makes certain findings. So if you, Madam Mayor, if you would just open the HRA meeting at this point, and then we will go to the public.
Okay, I'll call the HRA meeting to order. Do you want me to go ahead and do approval of the minutes from that meeting, or wait?
Why don't we wait to do that until we conduct the public hearing? Tonight's public hearing on the tax increment financing plan, it reads tax increment financing plan and project management agreement. You have in front of you Goldenrod's new resolutions for both the HRA and the city council that authorize the amendment of the tax increment plan, which would, at this point, extend the tax increment plan. Otherwise, we, the city would not be in a position to collect additional increments from this tax increment district. The city and the owner of the property are still discussing the exact terms of the project management agreement, and that will likely be brought back to you in January for approval. But the city needs to have in place the extension of the tax increment district before the end of the year, and that's why that's for you tonight. So if there's any questions for staff, Ms. Jeremiah is also very knowledgeable, more knowledgeable than actually anyone at the table tonight on this matter, having dealt with all the details of this. But if there's council questions, we'll handle that, otherwise you could proceed to the hearing.
Okay. Counsel, any questions of staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this TIF district? Okay?
See, none. I would move that we close that public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that brings us to approval of the minutes, then?
Yes, you can go to approval of the minutes of the HRA and follow the rest of the agenda.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
Move to approve the minutes of the HRA meeting held September 4, 2012.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item for the HRA meeting is adoption of a resolution certifying the 2013 HRA property tax levy. Mr. Getcho.
Mayor and counsel, you, similar to the city budget, you approved a preliminary levy and budget in September, and you need to approve a final levy, which you'll see later with the budget too, at this time of the year. And Miss Kachiver covered that portion of the HRA levy, which has actually remained the same for many, many years, but is also part of the overall levy package.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution certifying the 2013 property tax levy to be $200,000 and approving the 2013 budget of $200,000, as reviewed by the council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is adoption of a resolution amending the TIF plan and project management agreement. That's what we just reviewed when we first opened the meeting.
Yes, and the Goldenrod addresses just amendment of the TIF plan, not the project management agreement.
All right. Any questions of staff? Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution amending the tax increment financing plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. We're back to the city council meeting. I need a motion to adopt the resolution approving the amendment of the TIF financing plan.
Move to adopt the resolution approving amendment of the tax increment financing plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to the first reading of an ordinance updating the fee schedule for administration of official controls. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I'm going to do a quick overview of both C and D, because they're two public hearings, but they cover different areas. The C part is the ordinance that we have a first reading, and you'll see later on, we have a second reading for updating our fee schedule for any fees that we have that are part of city code. And they're the types of fees that are related to building code, building inspection, and other official controls. And most of the packet that you have tonight goes into detail about the proposed fee in every single area. And in many, many areas, we're not adjusting the fees, but we bring all the fees forward regardless, and we hold a public hearing on all the fees. The D portion, the resolution updating the fee schedule, these are all of our fees that are not within ordinance or within official controls, such as a community center membership or other charges for services that you heard about earlier, that we charge as well. We do not need to hold a public hearing, but it's been council past practice to hold a public hearing for any change in any fee in the city of Eden Prairie. So the C portion, as I said, is a first reading for those official controls. D is related to the fee schedule for all other city services, and you could open the two public hearings separately and take action on the two fees, and staff could answer any questions you have on the particular fees.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
The only question that I would throw out there is, we saw with the budget presentation the fact that our tax levy is in the lower portion of MLC cities' tax levy. Similarly, are our fees similarly positioned amongst MLC cities? Are we outliers? Are we too high? Are we making our community center available to people with a reasonable rate, that kind of thing?
A couple comments, and anybody else can weigh in as well. So some of our fees are related to policies we have to recover our costs. And even though, whether community center is a good example, where we have plans on cost recoveries for fees, but at the same time, we'll look to the market and see how we compare on fees. I do know with utility fees, because we spent quite a bit of time talking about water and sewer and storm sewer, we have remained in the lower third of, as compared to other cities when it comes to those fees. And obviously, those make up a big part of services that people receive. But whether it's what we charge for a copy, or what plan may cost, we do look at other cities, and I think we are very competitive. I don't think, I can't think of any area where we're quite a bit higher. But I do know, like I said, with the utility fees, I know we've stayed in that lower third.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on either item C or D? Okay, is there a motion on item C, please?
I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance updating the fee schedule for administration of official controls.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Item D, is there a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution?
Move to close the public hearing and adopt the 2013 fee resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Riley views, Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Our last public hearing tonight is a land use development project, a planned unit development, district zoning change, and a preliminary plat on 13.4 acres at the, I'll call it the intersection of Lake Riley Road and Pioneer Trail. And the proposal before you is for 28 lots and two outlots and road right of way. Official notice of the public hearing was published on the November 22, Eden Prairie News, and sent to 59 property owners, and the project was recommended for approval unanimously 5-0 at the plan commission of November 26. The developer is here tonight with a presentation for you on this project to provide a bit of an overview, and then the developer and staff are also here to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. Thank you for everything, for having us again. It's always nervous coming up here. If I could, I'm going to go over and do a presentation from the side, if that's all Can you hear me okay? This just gets back to the project that we're proposing and just some of the projects that we've done previously here in the city. This one should be very similar to what you've seen that we've done right across the street from this development. This is the area that you will recognize. This is a better visual of it, to give you an idea of where it is. It's off of Lake Riley, it's just considered southwest of the boat launch, and it's across the street from Stonegate, the development that we did back in the early 2000s. On the development, and this is the view across the street, and I hope that the folks from Stonegate will have a similar view, looking the other direction. That's the goal of the development. We'd like to bring in some consistent housing, similar to this type of ideas and thoughts. We had a, at our neighborhood meeting, it was well-attended. We had probably 15 to 20 folks there. I had a very interesting meeting with, and I'm sorry if I misspelled it, the Shonaker residents, a very kind family that had been in the lake about 40 years. They had some concerns about their privacy, and would we maintain their privacy along the trail? So I went to their house, and I walked a lot with Paul Shonaker, met his father, and his mother was there. And this picture shows you from their driveway, if you look to the left through their trees. Fortunately, they've got a lot of tall trees already. The next is the arrow which shows you where their house sits. So both sides of this trail, as you can see, the foliage will all stay as it is. So both sides will stay very heavily landscaped, and so that was something that they had, not a concern, but a question about, that we said would definitely be addressed. Again, here is where the property sits, and this shows the landscape plan. I had brought this with me to the Shonaker house to show them exactly the plantings and where they'll be going. We are asking for a couple PUD waivers, and we're asking for a five-foot offset from the variance of the setback, meaning the house will become five feet closer to Pioneer Trail, to keep it from the back areas. The cul-de-sac length, we are looking for a waiver on that because of the length, and if I could go back and show you the length, and you can see there down towards where it would come out and meet Crestwood Terrace, I believe, there. We had concerns about the traffic. That hairpin turn is a very dangerous spot, and we thought if we put an emergency access in there, and we deed the property to the city, that we, in the future, if the city felt necessary, once the improvements happen on Pioneer Trail, then it could still be built. But Pioneer Trail, with our engineers, we figured it'd have to come down by about two feet to increase the sidelines, to make sense of that. So therefore, we're going to leave it there as an emergency exit, if for any tragic reason we'd need to get an ambulance or somebody through there with the road closed off. And then the other thing was, is traffic going to be okay coming out of there? So we had a traffic study done, and they were questioning whether there would be enough room or backup from Stonegate right there at that intersection that Arrow's pointing to, back to where the cul-de-sac will come in. And we had a traffic study that was done, and it came back very good in the fact that I don't believe they had more than three cars lined up there ever at one time. So that being said, we'd like to move forward. We feel it'll be a nice development, gorgeous views, and well-placed. So I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Counsel, questions? One question I have is, I'm concerned about that stubbed-in road. Personally, we moved into a development in the early stages of the area being developed. The road was projected to go through, and rather than temporarily cul-de-sac it or ignore that fact, the city at that time put in a big, almost like, I don't know what kind of a sign it is, I don't know what name it is, it's a big sign. It wasn't just a sign on a post, it was a big thing like you would have at the end of a road that would keep people from going through, basically saying, this is going to go through at some point in time. And so when the city did come in and extend the road, people weren't surprised, and there wasn't opposition to it. We've seen in other parts of the city, areas where a road is supposed to ultimately go through into other developments or onto a major road like this once upgrades are done. And the neighborhood becomes very adversarial to it, and it's very difficult at that point, especially if properties have turned over and the original people that knew the road was supposed to go through no longer live there. So my concern is, how are you going to make that fact known to the potential buyers of property there? And what kind of signage will there be? What kind of evidence? Because if it's all kind of graded and seeded and mowed and looks just like the rest of that berm that will be on that side, it's going to be very difficult for people to deal with it changing to a road.
Very good comment, and it makes perfect sense, Mayor. And what we propose to do is put a 12-foot trail, this blacktop trail coming in there. And we're going to be sure not to line it straight up with the road across the street, so that it won't look like that is the future of it. It'll look like it's in the sidewalk of the future road. And I would be happy to- And I would be happy to put any type of signage that council would see fit to state future road extension or something to that effect.
Okay.
Be happy to do it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on Riley View? Is there a motion?
I'll make it, make sure I'm on the right one. So I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 13.4 acres, and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning district change from rural to R1 9.5 on 13.4 acres, and adopt the resolution for preliminary plat on 13.4 acres into 28 lots, two outlots, and road right-of-way lots, and direct staff to prepare development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just want to ask a question. When you mentioned the road potential connection in the neighborhood that you moved into, I'm guessing that connection at the time was not part of a PUD that, like, was a done deal? Was it like, if the land between it develops someday?
Right, right.
Is this different? I mean, this?
It's a little bit different because it's attached, or...
Because the road will drive it, and then it's in our approval to make. I mean, it will happen. Is that a difference?
No, I don't know. Is it in our approval tonight?
Go ahead, Robert.
With the approval tonight, no, it is not. The developer would be required to post surety for the connection of that road, but there would be a sunset on that surety, two years after final acceptance of all improvement.
So future council with neighbor concerns could change this?
They potentially could. Hennepin County might have a weigh-in on that as well, because it's access to their roadway. But we want to preserve the opportunity for that connection, but the decision will be made at a future date. And I think signing it is a great idea, so that there are no surprises. But I think ultimately, the council is not approving that road being built tonight. It's simply preserving the opportunity for it to happen in the future.
Can we have signs both, on both ends of where that road would be? So that, you know, it's both off the cul-de-sac and off the main road, where people can see that this, in fact, is a planned thing? Because I think that helps, too, just to have it very clear to people that this is, you know, we do have quite a number of people coming in and complaining, thinking that this is just a nice long cul-de-sac, but yet we've proved that you need multiple accesses. So I'd just as soon not go through one of those again, especially if it's a little ways out in the future, you know, five, six years, you're going to have properties turning over.
Now, are you talking at the entrance to Aubrey, or are you talking about at the point where the road would come off of Pioneer Trail?
Isn't it the Pioneer Trail one that's the future one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, but why don't you say two signs? I'm saying, do you mean a sign for the people at the beginning of the street?
Yeah.
So that they know what's going to happen? Or are you talking about a sign on the Pioneer Trail side to say a road is going to go into this neighborhood from Pioneer Trail?
Both ends, both sides.
That'd be like three signs.
It's not that long, it's not that long a period, but yeah, so people can see exactly where it goes from the inside to the outside.
You don't mean at the entrance coming in on the east side, you mean?
No, just the short little stretch.
Just on the short one.
The short little stretch, where you would have a sign at the beginning and the end of that short little road, where people could see exactly where it was going. So there's no surprises, and they realize that this, in fact, goes out to that road, you know. It's not going to be a real long road, it doesn't look like.
No, no. Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, and we have council conditions that have been discussed. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
I just wanted to comment that when I came back on the council in 2010, and budgets were really, really tight, and I think this entire council had a really strong commitment to the fact that we wanted to keep standards high in Eden Prairie. We wanted the recovery to happen, and to happen in Eden Prairie first. And in 2010, there was no housing development. It's been so nice in the last year, year and a half, to see developers coming in and investing in our community, and it tells us, I mean, it helps us to know that we hit the right course, and that people still want to live in Eden Prairie, and you're building houses commensurate with our desires. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to pass on from a resident of Eden Prairie, Weyden, thank you for that. As a resident of Eden Prairie, and the kids growing up here with sports, I commend the council and the city for moving to build a community center like we have it. Because when I pull up now, they're so organized, the counter's open for the kids, skating's open, skating lessons are open. It's really, really nice.
That's great.
It used to be hard for it to get a TV in there, let alone a real community center. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
I thought about that, Rick, when you were talking about.
Well, that's interesting that you bring that up, because in our Friday report that Rick sends out, there was just an update on memberships at the community center, and memberships have doubled in the last two years. So people are discovering it that didn't used to use it and are very pleased with it. So it's nice to hear from you, too.
I took my four-year-old to skating lessons, and I told Mark Luke there, it was so organized, it was absolutely fabulous.
Good.
So thank you.
That's good to hear. Thank you. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Approval of payment of claims is submitted.
Second.
Any items to question? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lukens.
Aye.
Ordinances and resolutions, we have a second reading of an ordinance updating the fee schedule. Mr. Getcho.
Yes, Mayor, as I said earlier, because we have an ordinance, it needs two readings on the official controls for fees, so this is the second reading.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the second reading of the ordinance updating the fee schedule for administration of official controls and adopt resolution approving summary publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Reports of council members, Mr. Case.
I just wanted to publicly make a statement that we've done privately with telling our staff what a great job they did on elections. And I know that it was written somewhere, I'm not sure that we...
Let it to the editor.
Oh, yeah. You did a great job, thank you. But I wanted to publicly commend Kitty Porter and Lorene Waters, and I think there's a third person I'm blanking on that really participated a lot. But our staff did a great job, and I know there was a mess-up that slowed down the tallying, which was not Eden Prairie's issue or fault. And yet, we understand how it happened, and I think that can be corrected by recommendation in the future. But our staff did a stellar job running the entire election, as they always do. But this was particularly tough, and I think the highest voting average is ever, is what at least Kitty thought at this point.
Eighty, I believe, eighty-six percent may have been our turnout, eighty-six percent, which is our highest ever.
Anyway, great job to our staff, and I'd like, if you would communicate that to Kitty and other staff, what a great job they did.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would also like, at this point, to thank Kathy Nelson for, Councilmember Kathy Nelson, for representing the city at the ribbon-cutting for the new 169-494 interchange. I haven't had a chance to drive the whole thing, but traffic is certainly moving better. Thank you for doing that, Kathy. I hear you did a great job. And then I would also like to say that I am going to be working with Councilmember Aho on our city manager's performance review. So we'll be getting started on that in a few weeks, hopefully bringing that back to the council in February. Report of city manager, Mr. Getcho.
Mayor, Council, thank you. As I mentioned earlier, this is a time where you are being asked to take action on our 2013 property tax levy and budget, and this action needs to be taken by December 28th of this year. And so, again, we're available for any questions or clarifications you may need.
Questions of staff? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Well, this is just to repeat for our residents in the audience and listening, also at home, that this is the end of a long process that we've been involved with a lot. So it may sound short and rather quick tonight, but it really has had hours and hours and hours of preparation put into it. And again, we'd like to thank our staff for the great job they did. So I would like to move to adopt a resolution certifying the 2013 property tax levy to be $32,549,320, and approve the 2013 budget of $42,785,579, as reviewed by the council, and consent and approve the HRA tax levy and budget of $200,000.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Can I also comment, like Ron, that this year, I think the staff has worked with us the longest and closest since I've come on the council. And I really approve of the starting earlier in the year and getting lots of input from everything, and I think it shows with the budget that everybody is comfortable with and keeps our services high. So I would like to commend staff on that, and I hope there's a repeat.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. And I'd just like to say, in Ms. Cheever's presentation tonight, there were lots of numbers thrown on about property tax levy and net and whatever. And it's interesting, in this motion, I just wanted to point out, it does say $32.5 million for the property tax levy. But then, doesn't, didn't you say that that goes down to 30.8 once we remove fiscal disparities? Or... Well, that is the number that you've given us.
It does, it does. It's in the synopsis, that's correct.
Yeah. So just to clarify, because the whole fiscal disparities thing is so confusing, is that money that we collect and it goes right to the fiscal disparities pool?
Actually, fiscal disparities goes to the pool of tax capacity.
Right.
We get some money back in dollars.
Okay, okay, got it. All right. But the net is 30.8 million. Okay. Resolution approving 2013 to 2022 capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Another item, we spent some time on in workshops and discussion is updating our new capital improvement plan and actually moving from a five-year plan to a 10-year plan, looking out even further in terms of our capital improvements in our city. So tonight, Ms. Cheever would provide a quick overview of our capital improvement plan and request that, following that, you take action approving the 2013 to 2022 CIP.
Mayor, council members, pleased to be presenting to you again tonight. The capital improvement plan, the objectives of the plan is to plan for capital maintenance and improvement, providing consistent investment in city equipment, facilities, and infrastructure, and to preserve and expand capital in a way that is sustainable and affordable. This is a summary of the plan. Again, it's for 10 years, and the total is almost $254 million of planned projects. The largest department is engineering at $162 million, which is many, many transportation projects for improvements within the city. Public Works is primarily the pavement management program, which is $25 million of that 28 million. Various community development projects, a lot of that paid for out of TIF funds and the Economic Development Fund. Park and Recreation Department, or Park and Recreation Projects, and then some of the other departments. This is a summary of the funding sources for all the projects. So out of the city sources, some of the funding comes from the city's enterprise funds, primarily Water, Sewer, and Storm Drainage Fund of almost $28 million, also almost $12 million out of the city's TIF funds, with $64 million coming out of other city funds, for a total of $104 million of city funds. Then there's other funding sources of $150 million, a lot of that's MSA, state aid, money for MINDOT for transportation projects, again, for that total of $254 million. So this is a summary of the various funding sources for the city's portion of the fund. Again, the biggest funding source is the pavement management fund. The next fund is the capital maintenance and reinvestment fund. That's the fund where the city's liquor operation profit goes into another one-time funding. Also, the facilities internal service fund, the park improvement fund, the economic development fund. They also provide funding for various projects. So again, the outcomes is to fund $254 million in projects through 2022, $104 million city funds, 150 other funds. There's no new tax levy for debt until 2022 for a fire truck, and we have decreasing debt service payments. It maintains our pavement management program, provides for building maintenance, develops our last neighborhood park, replaces the floor for ice rink number two. There's improvements to many parks. It maintains our trails, maintains our tennis courts, our play equipment, our parking lots, our IT infrastructure, and it replaces our public safety radios. So it does a lot. Again, this was in the future, or the previous presentation, but it shows our declining future debt levy, assuming no new debt is issued. And just a reminder, the fact that we have a capital improvement plan that's well-funded and that we take care of our community is one of the contributing factors for the city's bond rating. We have the highest bond rating that's given by Moody's Investor Service, which helps us save some money when we do decide to issue debt.
Mayor, Council, the one comment I'd add, too, is that the actual document, which you've been given separately, is very large, but in the interest of getting all the information out and in the interest of transparency, that full document is or will be very soon available on the city website. So someone can go through that document and see the details of all the projects that we're looking at in the next 10 years. There's a sheet for every project, and you can see how each fund operates and each funding source. This was obviously an overview, but we do make that entire document and plan to available after it would be approved.
Okay. Thank you. And again, like Mr. Case said, with the budget, this is a process that we've been going through for the year with several meetings and presentations, but yet there may be some questions. Are there any questions for Ms. Cheever? Okay.
The only question I have is, could we please get an emailed version of the whole budget? I know it may be online, but it would be nice to have one in my online files.
We will do that, certainly.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'd move to adopt the resolution approving the 2013 to 2022 capital improvement plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Any other business to bring before the council? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting adjourned. Is this our...